The Lamb of God, which take away the sin of the world. So, he was able to understand that God had sent his lamb for the remission of the sins of the whole world. Now, we can see this lamb even in the Garden of Eden. When Adam and Eve sinned against God, disobeyed God, there was a lamb which God had to slaughter in that garden in order to cover the shame and nakedness of Adam and Eve. Then again, we find this lamb being provided by Jehovah Jireh, our God, the Lord who provides on Mount Moriah. When God asked Abraham to offer his son Isaac on that mount. And when Isaac, when Abraham obeyed the Lord and was ready to offer his son, one and only son, Isaac on that mount, God provided graciously a lamb. And in this way, Isaac was spared. And then this lamb was offered as a substitute in place of Isaac. Once again, we find this lamb as a passover lamb in the land of Egypt. When the children of Israel were redeemed from the hand of Pharaoh, from the land of bondage, from the land of slavery, after serving Pharaoh for more than four hundred years. So, now God had to provide a lamb for the remission of the sins of the whole world. Romans chapter three, verse twenty-three says, "For all have sinned and fall short of the glory of God." And again, one John, chapter one, verse eight says, "If we say we have no sin, we deceive ourselves, and the truth is not in us." My dear brothers and sisters, for the remission of our sins, Hebrews chapter nine, verse twenty-two says, "That without shedding of blood there is no remission." So, in order to provide for our salvation, the Lord had to provide his own lamb. We are going to see as the Lord enables the sevenfold attributes of the Lamb of God in Lord Jesus Christ. Firstly, we find in first Peter, chapter one, verse nineteen, it is a spotless lamb. Can anyone read this verse? First Peter, chapter one, verse nineteen.
But with the precious blood of Christ as of a lamb without blemish and without spots.
Yes. Verse eighteen says like this, "For as much as you know that you are not redeemed with corruptible things as the silver and gold from your vain conversation, deceived by tradition from your fathers, but with the precious blood of Christ as of a lamb without blemish and without spots." A lamb without blemish or without spots, sinless lamb. There was no blemish found in Lord Jesus Christ. There was no sin found in him. Because that was the standard God had set for his own lamb in order to provide for the remission of the sins of mankind. The lamb which God had to provide is a spotless lamb. We find in the Old Testament that children of Israel used to offer lambs as sacrifice, lambs with the blemish and lambs with the defect. And that's how they offered these animals as sacrifices. But when it comes to the God's standards, the Lamb of God had to be spotless, without blemish. And in first Peter, we find in chapter two, verse twenty-two, these words, "Who did no sin, neither was guile found in his mouth." There was no sin in the Lord, in our Savior, in the Lamb of God, there was no sin. Pharisees, the Sadducees, the scribes and the priests, all the time, they wanted to find fault with the Lord. They wanted to find a sin in the Lord, either in word or deed, but they could not find. What a wonderful spotless lamb the Lord had provided for the remission of our sins. Then again, in John's Gospel, chapter eight, verse forty-six, the Lord himself said these words in John's Gospel, chapter eight, verse forty-six. I'll read out this verse, "Which of you convinceth me of sin? And if I say the truth, why do you not believe me? Which of you convinceth me of sin? Which of you can find fault in me?" The Lord challenges the people, the Pharisees and the Sadducees, who wanted to always find fault with the Lord. So, that is how we find that there was no spot, there was no sin in the Lord, and there was no guile in his mouth. As the children of the Lord, even Pilate also in Luke's Gospel, chapter twenty-three, verse four, "The man who handed over Lord Jesus Christ to be crucified on the cross" says these words in Luke's Gospel, chapter twenty-three, verse four. "Then said Pilate to the chief priests and to the people, 'I find no fault in this man.'" What a wonderful testimony our Lord had kept for himself and for us. No fault, the man who handed over the Lord to be crucified on the cross said, "There was no fault, I find no fault in him." My dear brothers and sisters, the lamb which was offered for the remission of our sins was a spotless lamb. The blood which was shed for the remission of our sins was a spotless blood. It was faultless blood, it was blameless blood, it was innocent blood. What about our lives? We are also, we have been redeemed by this spotless lamb. We are the children of this spotless lamb. John's Gospel, chapter one, verse twelve, "But to all who received him, who believed in his name, he gave them the power to become the children of God." What about our lives? Are we living a spotless life for the Lord these days? That is very, very important. Are we living, how is our life? How is our testimony at our workplaces? How is our testimony at our homes? How is our testimony before our children? And before our friends, before our colleagues? Pilate was an enemy. Pilate was an enemy. Pharisees and Sadducees were enemies of the Lord. We get a people who always wanted to find fault with the Lord. Enemies could not find fault with the Lord. Their whole aim, motive was to find the fault, they could not find fault. Transparent life of Lord Jesus Christ, a Lamb of God, without spots, without blemish. How is our life? So, that is the first attribute of our Lord Jesus Christ. In Hebrews, in the book of Hebrews, chapter nine, book of Hebrews, chapter nine, verse fourteen, "How much more shall the blood of Christ, who through the eternal Spirit offered himself without spots to God, purge your conscience from the dead works to stir believing in God." So, our Lord, the blood which was offered for your remission and my remission was without spots to God. Blameless life, thirty-three and a half years of young life of our Lord Jesus Christ was a spotless, blameless life, lived in all holiness to be offered as a sacrifice, as a Lamb of God, that was the first attribute. Then secondly, we find in Philippians, book of Philippians, chapter two, book of Philippians, chapter two, from verses six to eight. Let this mind, verse five to eight, we'll read. "Let this mind be new, which was also in Christ Jesus, who, being in the form of God, thought it not robbery to be equal with God," verse seven, "but made himself of no reputation, and took upon him the form of a servant, and was made in the likeness of men," verse eight, "and being found in fashion as a man, he humbled himself and became obedient unto death, even the death of the cross." The second attribute of this Lamb of God is humble submission. He was a submissive lamb. The Lamb of God submitted to the will of the Father. Even the Lord prayed three times, Garden of Gethsemane, "Father, if it is thy will, take away this cup of suffering, but not my will, let thy will be done." This Lamb of God was a submissive lamb, submitted to the will of the Father, submitted to the plan of the Father, submitted totally to the will of the Father. Submission, obedience and submission. And took no reputation, verse seven, it says, "but made himself of no reputation." People all over the world want reputation today. They strive for reputation, they work for reputation, they engage in all sorts of things to gain reputation, fame, glory, honor, exaltation. But our Lord left all those things. The highest heavens cannot contain his glory. The Lord left all his glory in heaven, for your sake and my sake. And did not, made himself of no reputation, took upon the form of a servant. My dear brothers and sisters, who is ready to take the form of a servant in these days? Everybody wants to be a master. But our Lord, who is really the master, took the form of a servant in order to make you and I his children. He was made in our likeness, he shared in our flesh and bones. The eternal God, the immortal God, the invincible God, where the highest heavens cannot contain his glory, had to be made in the likeness of men. Galatians, chapter four, verse four, "But in the fullness of time God sent forth his Son, born of a woman, for the remission of our sins." So, he was made in our likeness, made just like us, as we are tempted, he was tempted. As we are weak, he became weak. As we thirst, he thirsted. We weep, he wept. All human psychology or human tendencies, emotions that we go through, the Lord went through, he empathized with us. In all his suffering, he empathized with us. That's how he became a submissive Lamb of God, obedient even unto death. He was made, verse eight, "being found in fashion as a man, humbled himself." Humble, the humility of our Lord brought salvation in our lives. If we would have not humbled himself, we would not have received salvation. And then he became obedient unto death, even the death of the cruel cross. Obedience, how many, we are all children of this living God, sanctified and purchased by the blood of Lord Jesus Christ. How far we are submissive to the Lord? How far we are submissive to his will? How far we are obedient unto him? How far we are humbling ourselves in his sight? That is what we need to examine this Good Friday. Then thirdly, we find in Isaiah, chapter fifty-three, Isaiah, book of Isaiah, chapter fifty-three, verse seven. Isaiah, chapter fifty-three, verse seven, "He was oppressed, and he was afflicted; yet he opened not his mouth. He is brought as a lamb to the slaughter, and a sheep before her shearers is stung; so he opened not his mouth." The third attribute of this Lamb of God is a silent lamb. He did not open his mouth. Though there was no fault found in him, yet he did not open his mouth. Because he did not open his mouth that day, we are able to open our hearts this day and praise him and worship him and exalt him and honor him. My dear brothers and sisters, the third attribute of our Lord was a silent lamb. In the Mark's Gospel, chapter fifteen, in verse five, you find, and Pilate was asking the Lord like this, Mark's Gospel, chapter fifteen, verse four and five. "And Pilate asked him again, saying, 'Answer us, thou, nothing; behold, how many things they witnessed against thee,'" verse five. "But Jesus yet answered, 'Nothing,' so that Pilate marvelled." People were accusing him. All sorts of accusations were brought before the Lord. But what did he do? He was silent, he did not open his mouth. And Pilate also wondered, "They are bringing so many accusations before you, so many false accusations before you, you are not opening your mouth." Silent, our Lord was silent Lamb of God. He maintained his silence, though he knew there was no sin in him, he knew that there was no fault in him. People knew that there was no sin in him. Pilate knew that there was no sin in him. Yet, the Lord was silent. My dear brothers, my dear brothers and sisters, today, are we also being silent as the children of the Lord? That is very, very important. We are purchased by the blood of this silent lamb. People may accuse us, people may condemn us, people may falsely put charges against us as children of God. The world may hate us, but are we silent? That is what is the challenge before us. As the Lord was silent, he did not open his mouth before his accusers. He did not open his mouth before the Pilate. The Lord was silent, not only the Lord was silent. When the Lord prayed three times in the Garden of Gethsemane, God the Father was silent to the prayer, to the cry of this son. My dear brothers and sisters, silence was there. From heaven there was silence, and even in that garden, there was silence, and everywhere, there was silence. The Lord was silent. His silence that day brought great salvation for you and for me this day. How grateful we should be to the Lord. He was silent. How are we keeping silent? Are we keeping silent when people are accusing us? Are we being testimonies unto those who are our enemies? Are we keeping our testimony in our workplaces? That is very important. Silent, the Lord was silent. We should, we react these days, our lives are so stressful. We find our lives are so busy that for the smallest action, there is this greatest reaction. Great reaction takes place. At the smallest irritation, we get irritated, we shout back, we open our mouths, we curse people. But the Lord became a curse for us. He became a curse. So, the silent, the third attribute of our Lord was a silent lamb. Fourthly, Hebrews, book of Hebrews, book of Hebrews, chapter nine, verse twenty-six. Book of Hebrews, chapter nine, verse twenty-six. "For then must he often have suffered since the foundation of the world; but now, once in the end of the world, hath he appeared to put away sin by the sacrifice of himself." From the foundation of the world, he suffered, and in the end of the world, he offered himself as a sacrifice for the sins of the world. He offered himself. The fourth attribute of this Lamb of God was a sacrificial Lamb of God, offered himself. God did not send forth these angels for our salvation. He could have sent thousands of angels if he wanted. He did not send seraphims, he did not send cherubims. He sent his one and only begotten Son. God, John's Gospel, chapter three, verse sixteen, so familiar verse. God sold out the world that he gave his one and only begotten Son for our salvation. The Lamb of God was a sacrificial Lamb of God. So, he offered, he offered himself on the cross of Calvary. What a great sacrifice. He came to this world to offer himself as a sacrifice. He left this world offering himself as a sacrifice for the remission of our sins. My dear brothers and sisters, Romans, chapter twelve, verse one and two, says like this, Romans, chapter twelve, verse one and two. "I beseech you therefore, brethren, by the mercies of God, that you present your bodies as living sacrifices, wholly acceptable unto God, which is your reasonable service," verse two. "And we not confirm to this world, but we transform by the renewing of your mind, that you may prove what is that good and acceptable and perfect will of God." Our Lord, the Lamb of God, was a willing sacrificial lamb who offered himself as a sacrifice. If we had wanted, he would have offered so many angels as sacrifices for us. But he did not do that. He himself offered himself as a sacrifice, sacrificial lamb unto God the Father, to provide great remission for our sins. Now, as the children of this sacrificial Lamb of God, what are we to do now? We have to offer ourselves, our bodies as living sacrifices, wholly unacceptable unto God, which is our reasonable service. Are we doing that? Paul says in first Corinthians, chapter fifteen, verse thirty-one, "I die daily." Is it dying experience, is it dying our experience every day? Paul died daily, died to his will, died to his desires, died to his ambitions, died to his self. What about our lives? Have we died to the world? Have we died to the flesh? Have we died to sin? That is what is the challenge before us. Offering our bodies as a living sacrifice. That is very, very important. Now, and we are told in verse two, "We not confirm to this world, but we transform by the renewing of your mind, that you may prove what is that good and acceptable and perfect will of God." When we die daily, when we die, when death is our daily experience, what will happen? We are able to know the perfect will of God in our lives. What a wonderful thing it is, God wants to reveal his will in our lives. God has a will for us, for us, for our children, and also regarding our lives, God has a perfect will. Jeremiah, chapter twenty-nine, verse eleven, "For I know the plans I have for you, plans for your prosperity and not for destruction, plans to give you hope and a future." What a wonderful plan, what a wonderful will the Lord's will is. First Thessalonians, book of First Thessalonians. First Thessalonians, chapter four, verse three, "For this is the will of God given your sanctification, that you abstain from formication." What is the will of God in our lives? As blood-bought saints of the living God, as those who are washed and cleansed in the precious blood of Lord Jesus Christ, as washed in the precious blood of our sacrificial lamb, what is his will regarding our lives today? That we should be holy lives, we should live holy lives. That is what is the will of God in our lives. Are we living a holy life, holy in our thoughts, holy in our words, holy in our deeds? The Lord was holy in all these things. There was no unholyness in his thought. There was no unholyness in his words. There was no unholyness in his deeds. Everything was for the glory of God, the Father. What about our lives, my dear brothers and sisters? In this unholy world, where the people, where the world is racing towards unholyness, what about our lives? The Lord said, "You are the salt of the earth, you are the light of the world. Let people see your good works and praise your Father in heaven." Are we living a holy life pleasing unto the Lord? That is a great challenge for us as children of God. We keep ourselves holy as holy vessels unto the Lord, then we are able to know his perfect will regarding our lives. When we are in the plan of God, when we are in the center of his will, we are blessed people, we are blessed by the Lord, and we become blessing to others. That is the fourth attribute of the Lamb of God. Then fifthly, Mark's Gospel, Mark's Gospel, chapter fourteen, Mark's Gospel, chapter fourteen, verse twenty-six. "And when they had sung a hymn, they went out into the mount of Olives," Mark's Gospel, chapter fourteen, verse twenty-six. "And when they had sung a hymn, they went out into the mount of Olives." What a wonderful thing it is, singing the Lord along with his disciples. They sang a hymn and went out, sacrificing himself on the cross. What a wonderful thing. Salvation came to us through song of the Lord. The Lord sang a hymn for you and for me, and he went and offered himself as a sacrifice. My dears brothers and sisters, what a blessed people we are. How much the Lord loves us, how much the Lord, just now we sang songs as we sang songs unto the Lord, praising him, glorifying him, honoring him through our singing. The Lord also provided our salvation by singing a hymn and went out into the mount of Olives. Book of Psalm, chapter forty, verse three, book of Psalm. Book of Psalm, chapter forty, verse three. "And he had put a new song in my mouth, even praising unto my God. Many shall see and fear, and shall trust in the Lord, to put a new song in our mouths." The Lord, this sacrificial Lamb of God, sang a song and went out into the Garden of, went out into the Mount of Olives, offering himself as a sacrificial Lamb on the cross. What a wonderful thing. Praising God by singing, praising God through his songs, through songs, song of deliverance. In order to provide us with the song of deliverance, the Lord had to sacrifice himself on the cross. Are we singing songs unto the Lord daily? Are we praising him through our songs? Wonderful thing it is. We are blessed people, we have songs of Zion book, English is there, Telgo is there, and we sing and praise God for the song of salvation he has put in our hearts. So, that is the fifth attribute of our Lord. Singing in the midst of suffering. Are we singing in the midst of suffering today? That is important. The Lord sang and went out into the Mount of Olives and offered himself as a sacrifice. Are we singing songs unto the Lord? Are we praising the Lord in spite of suffering? Are we worshiping the Lord in spite of suffering? That is very important. Sixthly, sixthly, we find in Luke's Gospel, chapter twenty-three, Luke's Gospel, chapter twenty-three, verse forty-three, chapter twenty, Luke's Gospel, chapter twenty-three, verse forty-three. "And Jesus said unto him, Verily I say unto thee, 'Today shalt thou be with me in paradise.'" This was the words which the Lord was speaking to the thief on the cross. The thief was asking him, in verse forty-two, and he said unto Jesus, "Lord, remember me when thou comest into thy kingdom." So, we know that along with the Lord on the cross of Calvary, there were two thieves who were also crucified, one on his right and one on his left. One was mocking the Lord, making fun of the Lord, while the other was repenting of his sins. And when he repented of his sins, the Lord, and asking the Lord to remember him when he comes, the Lord said, "Pray, thou shalt be in paradise." What a wonderful word. The sixth attribute of our Lamb of God is, even on the cross, he was a saving lamb. He saved on the cross, before his death, on the cross, he saved the thief on the cross. My dear brothers and sisters, what a wonderful thing. He was a saving lamb, he saved us from our sins. Jesus means he should save his people from their sins. He saved you, he saved me. What about us? Are we witnessing to the perishing souls around us? That's why in Mark's Gospel, chapter sixteen, Mark's Gospel, chapter sixteen, verse fifteen, and he said unto them, "Go ye into all the world and preach the gospel to every creation." As children of this Lamb of God washed and cleansed in his precious blood, the Lord has given us this great commission to go into the world and preach the gospel to every creature. What a wonderful privilege it is to share the gospel with the perishing souls around us. There are many out there who need the Savior. You and I have found the Savior, but we should not end there, we should not stop there. There are many out there who need the Savior more than you and I, as much as you and I did. There are so many others who need the Savior, who need to taste the love of the God on the cross of Calvary, who need to come to the cross to be saved, who need to repent like the thief on the cross for their deeds, for their misdeeds, for their sinful lives, they need to repent. Are we carrying the gospel to the perishing souls? Very, very important. That's why the Lord said, "Father, Jesus Christ gave the great commission." Matthew's Gospel, chapter twenty-eight, define these words, Matthew's Gospel, chapter twenty-eight. Verse eighteen onwards we read. "And Jesus came and spoke unto them, saying, All power is given unto me in heaven and in earth." Verse nineteen, "Go ye therefore and teach all nations." Verse nineteen, go ye therefore and teach all nations, baptizing them in the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Ghost. Verse twenty, teaching them to observe all things whatsoever I have commanded you, and know I am with you always, even at the end of the world. So as children of God, as children of the living God, washed and dressed in the precious blood of Lamb of God, you and I have a great privilege of sharing the gospel with the perishing souls around us. Either in our home, among our relatives, or among our friends, our workplaces, wherever we, we can share the gospel, because all power is in heaven and on earth, is given to our Lord. So therefore, we have this power. Paul says, I am not ashamed of the gospel of Christ, for it is the power of God for the salvation of men. My dear brothers and sisters. So the sixth attribute of our Lord, a saving Lamb of God. He saved the thief on the cross before his death. He saved you and I, and it is on our shoulders that we need to take the gospel to the perishing souls around us and save them, snatch them from the lake of hellfire. Lastly, Hebrews, chapter nine, verse fourteen, the seventh attribute of our Lord. Hebrews, Book of Hebrews. Chapter nine, verse fourteen. They already read this verse, once again we read this verse. How much more shed the blood of Christ, who through the eternal Spirit offered himself with that spot of God, for your conscience from dead ones to serve the living God. So the seventh attribute of our Lord, the Lamb of God, is he is a sanctifying lamb. His blood sanctifies us, his blood washes us and cleanses us. Revelation, chapter one, verse six, Book of Revelation. Revelation, chapter one, verse six. Verse five and six. And from Jesus Christ, who is the faithful witness and the first to be gotten of the dead, and the prince of the kings of the earth, unto him that loved us and washed us from our sins in his own blood, and hath made us kings and priests unto God and his Father, to him be glory and dominion for ever and ever. Amen. What a blessed people we are, washed and cleansed in his own blood, not in the blood of bulls and goats, but in the precious blood of the Lord, he washed us from all our sins, cleansed us from all our guilt conscious, and made us kings and priests. Sanctified through the blood of Lord Jesus Christ, we are washed and we are cleansed and sanctified and made kings and priests in his sight. What a wonderful thing. Kings and priests of the living God. What a great honour it is, what a great honour, privilege. The blood of, First John, chapter one, we find in verse seven, First John, chapter one, verse nine we read, First John, chapter one, verse nine. If you confess our sins, he is faithful and just, to forgive us our sins and to cleanse us from all unwrightness. My dear brothers and sisters, the blood of Lord Jesus Christ offered freely for our cleansing, for our sanctification on the cross, that is the power in the blood of Lord Jesus Christ. Washed us and cleansed, washed us in his own blood, cleansed us in his own blood and sanctified us through his own blood, blood freely offered on the cross for your sins and my sins. So that is the seventh attribute of God, Lord, his blood is sanctifying blood. We are sanctified, that's why the Lord prayed in John's Gospel, chapter seventeen, verse seventeen. Father sanctify them with thy word, sanctify with them, them with thy truth. Thank John's Gospel, chapter seventeen. John's Gospel, chapter seventeen. Verse seventeen. The Lord prayed like this, sanctify them through thy truths, thy word is truth. That was the prayer of the Lord for his children, for believers, for those who are sanctified. Sanctify them through thy word, through thy truth, thy word is truth. We are sanctified in the blood of Lord Jesus Christ, washed and cleansed in the blood of Lord Jesus Christ. And from guilt conscious of sin, we are cleansed, my dear brothers and sisters. Are we keeping any sin in our lives? We need not, we should not keep as children of the living God, as children of the God who has sent his one and only begotten son for our remission of our sins. We should not keep any sin in cold storage in our lives. Any sin the Lord shows us, either it may be small sin or big sin, whatever it may be, in thought or word or deed, or in look, we have to confess for the Lord and seek his forgiveness and repent of it and be cleansed of the guilt conscious that sin brings in our lives. Anytime, anytime the Lord may come in our, may come in his second coming, in all his glory he will come. And he is preparing us with, through his word, through his blood, through his spirit, he is preparing us through, for his second coming. As children of the Lord, we need to live a sanctified, holy life unto the Lord every moment of our lives. When Satan, our enemy, the roaring lion adversary, always is after us, to defile us. But we need to be always sanctified before the Lord, should not keep any sin unconfessed. Whatever the Lord shows in our life, any sin it may be, immediately we need to confess before the Lord, accept our failure, confess it and seek his forgiveness. Lord, I have sinned here, Lord forgive me, wash me, oh Lord, through thy precious blood. Sanctify me, oh Lord, I have become unholy in thy sight. I have defiled myself through this unholy thought in my life. I have defiled myself through this unholy word which came out of my mouth. I have defiled myself through this unholy deed that I have done. Forgive me, Lord, wash me, cleanse me. We should be clean vessels for the Lord. Unless we are clean vessels for the Lord, sanctified vessels for the Lord, the Lord cannot use us. His power cannot be made manifest in us, the power of the cross of Calvary, the power in the blood of Lord Jesus Christ, the power of the Spirit of God. First Timothy, chapter one, verse seven, First Timothy. First Timothy, chapter one, verse seven. Sorry, Second Timothy, chapter one, verse seven, Second Timothy, chapter one, verse seven. For God hath not given us a spirit of fear, but of power and of love and of sound mind. That is the spirit we, you and I have received as children of the Lord, as children of the Lord who have been washed in the precious blood of the Lord, Jesus Christ. We have received the spirit of power, of love and of sound mind. We should not quench this spirit, we should not grieve the spirit of God who lives in our lives. First Corinthians, chapter three, First Corinthians, chapter three. Verse sixteen, though you know that you are the temple of God and that the spirit of God dwelleth in you. Our body is the temple of the living God, he lives in us. So we need to keep this body holy unto the Lord, a sanctified vessel for the Lord, a pure vessel for the Lord, useful for the master, my dear brothers and sisters. See in the sevenfold attributes of the Lamb of God. Firstly, Lamb of God, a spotless lamb, offered for remission of our sins. Secondly, he was a submissive lamb, obedient unto death, humbled himself with the form of a Sabbath. Thirdly, was a silent lamb, he did not open his mouth, even while he was being accused falsely. Fourthly, was a sacrificial lamb, he offered himself as a sacrifice for your sins and my sins. Fifthly, was a singing lamb, he sang a hymn and went and offered himself on the mount, from the mount of Olives. What a wonderful thing, singing in the midst of suffering. Are we doing that today? Sixthly, was a saving lamb, even before his death on the cross, cruel death on the cross. Last moments before his death, he saved the dying thief, the repenting thief. The thief repented of his sins, the Lord saved him and said, today you are, you shall be in paradise. Today is the day of salvation. And lastly, was, he is a sanctifying lamb, his blood washed us, cleansed us and sanctifies us to be, to live for the Lord, to live for the Lord, to be sanctified vessels unto the Lord and to be kings and priests unto the Lord. What can we render unto him? We take up the cup of salvation, offer our praise, worship, adoration and live life that is pleasing, holy and acceptable unto the Lord. May the Lord help us, shall we pray? Our living and loving heavenly Father, great and mighty God, once again we thank you and praise you for the sevenfold attributes which thou, once again thou hast spoken to us. Through the Lamb of God, which takeeth away our sin, the sin of the whole world. Living and loving heavenly Father, we are truly blessed people in thy sight. Because of thou hast sent the one and only begotten son as a Lamb of God to take away our sin, to be offered as a sacrifice for the remission of our sins. A submissive lamb, a silent lamb, a sacrificial lamb. All of whom we thank thee, we praise thee, a spotless lamb, a singing lamb, a saving lamb and a sanctifying lamb. What a blessed people we are, oh Lord, to be washed and cleansed in the precious blood of Lord Jesus Christ. Heavenly Father, we thank thee and we praise thee for sending such a wonderful lamb for the remission of our sins. And having been remissed, having been cleansed, washed and cleansed in the precious blood of this lamb, help us to live a life that is pleasing, holy, acceptable unto thee. We will offering our bodies as living sacrifices, holy unto thee, oh Lord, knowing thy will regarding our lives. Help us that even as we also live for thee, oh Lord, as thy children in this world, help us to take up our cross daily, deny our sins and follow thee. Like a pole, we may die daily and to live for thee and offer our bodies as a living sacrifice unto thee. Heavenly Father, since our body is the temple of the Holy Spirit of God. Lord, once again, we thank you and we praise you, oh Lord, for the cross for the death of, of Lord Jesus Christ on the cross of Calvary, humbled himself, allowed his body to be broken for us and allowed his, shed every drop of his blood for the remission of our sins. How blessed we are, oh Lord, to be washed and cleansed, heavenly Father, and to be redeemed by the precious blood of the Lord. Once again, with humility, we come before thy throne of grace. We thank thee, we praise thee, we glorify thee and honor thee. Lord, once again, thank thee for the saints at Bethan, Phalanx, Lord and Los Angeles. We thank thee for Brother Sudhir and his family, Brother Ashish and his family, Brother Paul and his family, Brother Shiva and his family, Brother Bharat and his family, and also other brothers and their families. We pray for all the children there, all may be born again and to engage and testify in the waters of Patson. Our brothers may be given the grace in their jobs, the grace be shown, sisters also. Lord, in their responsibilities at home and at office, workplaces, may we grant them their grace. Protect thy children, oh Lord, unto their mighty weeks. Heavenly Father, in this way take complete charge, help them to live for thee and for thy glory. Lord, in this way, Lord, thank thee once again for the blessed time granted to us. And once again, we thank thee and praise thee, protect us, keep us safe until thy coming. In Jesus' precious name we pray, amen.